Yeah, I lick them.
Oh, we're on air.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our June meeting of the year. This is our second monthly meeting of June. Mr. Kendall will be coming in. He's late, so he gets a tardy tonight, and he's doctor's pay for some, so he's okay. You got that, Adam?
Got it.
Got it. Okay, so let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the five United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Meneely has urged everybody to sing, "Yay."
School's out this summer.
Oh, yeah, right, right.
The two students should speak.
That's what we want. For summer.
Okay, here we go.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, let's begin with introductions. Let's start with Mr. Meneely, please.
Board Meneely, Ward one.
Brian Bellnet, Ward four.
Faith Fontaine at large.
Ronnie Hayes, Ward two.
Katie Grandin, Superintendent.
Pat Goddier at large.
Dan Boisson, Ward five.
Alfreda Fornia, Mayor's Rep.
Cheryl McClellan, Assistant Superintendent.
Adam Hanson, Business Manager.
Kiara Fornia, Student Rep.
Olivia Rolfe, Student Rep.
Chris Ross Walton, who keeps excellent notes for us. Thank you all very much. All right, communications. Does anybody have any communications they'd like to share with us? I would just like to say-
I would like to say thank you for participating in the parade, the Memorial Day Parade. You guys were awesome. It was really fun. Thank you very much.
It was a lot of fun.
Well, actually, the parade was fun. I went screaming and kicking and promised the world that I could go to Gertie's afterwards, and I have to say it was a lot of fun. We had a good time and it was fun.
Everybody enjoyed it.
It was a great turnout, right.
It was a great, great job by the city.
Just get ready, we're going to have the Maine State Parade next year, so we've had two meetings already.
Well, more important of all, we have an alumni weekend coming up.
Oh, yes.
We have an alumni weekend coming up, and at that time, there'll be many, many activities that I'm sure Alfreda will keep us apprised of, so we'll go on with that. But I'd like to say thank you very much to everybody that worked so hard and so diligently on getting the new Edward Little High School approved and passed on it. And I also want to thank the community. It may have been 16%, but it was 16% of the silent minority that came out of the woodwork, and we thank them very, very much for doing it. We're going to have an awesome high school, and we've got awesome plans that we're working on, so thank you. All right, we're going right on to the consent agenda. Can I have approval of the agenda, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments?
Yeah, I was gonna say it's including the addendum.
Yes, it includes the addendum, and as you know, these are new hires of teachers and guidance counselors, or just teachers, I believe it is right now.
You have a teacher, yeah, you have a guidance counselor.
Yes.
Free teachers.
So this is approval of these six people as well on it. Any questions? All in favor? All opposed? So it is go on. It's approved. Okay, which also is the approval of the minutes, too, I believe, so. All right, going on to administrative contract nominations. We also included that with it, so we have a principal, too, and the principal is Sean McGaw.
Assistant Principal at AMS.
And I'm looking to see if I see anybody there.
He couldn't be here, and they, both he and Cheryl Klein will come to a future meeting to meet you.
Okay, so thank you very much for that. And public participation. This is the time we ask the audience to come up and speak at the tables if they have anything that they'd like to say that's constructive about the school system, but not on the agenda tonight. So anybody out there like to say anything? Okay, all right. Oh, I got a thumbs up. That's good, Scott. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, I'm closing on public participation at this time, and if Tom doesn't come, we'll be done our agenda, so that's pretty good. Okay, student recognition. We've had two young ladies with us with Edward Little who are seniors. They've been here since they were juniors, I believe, on it, so we have seen them regularly, and they have participated, and sometimes they've been put on the spot. So what do you think about this? And they give us good feedback, and we certainly have appreciated them over the past two years. Both of them are going on to school. Kiara, where are you going?
I'm going to LaSalle College.
Oh, nice. And Olivia?
University of New Hampshire.
Congratulations to both of you, and great success to you.
And they do, they do receive help towards their college for being on the board. Part of it is getting a stipend, so they're being given that. They get that at the end of their service, and so we appreciate. So let's give them a hand.
Yeah, we just want to say thank you for giving us the opportunity. We've had a good, or a great experience being a part of this for the past two years.
It's been fun.
Yeah, and so thank you so much.
Do you have anything to report to tonight for us?
We don't.
They graduated.
It's summer.
Know that song I sang a little while ago, "School's Out"?
Right, that's it, right? Well, I just want to know, did you like graduation? Did you have fun?
Yeah, it was a lot of fun. I was very tired, got a little cranky at the end, but-
And this is when you went for a project graduation, you got cranky?
A long day and a long night, yeah.
A long week.
Long week.
It's a long week.
I kept looking at Mr. Avery and just being like, and he, you know, you know.
Well, we certainly have appreciated your support. Just thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on. Planning and Development Superintendent Grandin.
Yes, so each year at this time, Sue Doris with Administration work on an end-of-the-year performance summary. So Sue has been working with us about putting data together, so she has her support with her, as there are members of the audience that will also be coming up to share information about the work. And so Sue?
Thank you. So tonight, I'll be doing an end-of-the-year review with the help of all my fellow colleagues behind me. Tonight's agenda is going to include a review of our universal screening results, and then we're going to look at some other data points. So it's going to be a little different this year from what we've done in the past, and we are going to try and weave in our bright spots and our successes. And then, at the end, we're going to talk to you about what our next steps are as a result of what we're seeing in the data.
So something that was really important to Sue and Management Administration talked about is this is really for you a 30,000-foot viewpoint. Schools look at data at the school level, teachers look at data in their professional learning teams. So data is looked at all year long at all different levels of the system. So tonight is you to get a big picture of the system, recognizing that you know there's a lot going on behind the scenes that we're doing. So one thing you aren't going to see is the individual school data. You're going to see the big picture, because the individual school data, it follows the same lines of, you know, our schools that have certain demographics. But, so what we did here tonight is more of a big picture of how are we doing as a district as a whole and by grade level, so that you can see that. So that's what you're going to see this evening. And then some demographic things that we have challenges with, but we also have bright spots with. Yes, Sue?
So to begin with, well, as you know, we do our universal screening, and we've talked about what that is before, and so I'm just going to go ahead right into this. We're going to take a look at our reading proficiency for kindergarten through eighth grade, and so right now, in the spring, our proficiency is 61%. So that means that 61% of our students in kindergarten through eighth grade are meeting benchmarks. And this is a big jump up from the fall, where we were at 51%. So our students have made many gains over the course of the year. And over there, there's a little box. It says ESEA goal, 65%. We have district-level goals as part of our district plan, and this is through our title grants, and our goal this year was to get to 65%, and we're close. We're at 61%. Last year, let's see, where were we last year? Last year, we were at 62%.
What is ESEA?
Stands for the Elementary and Secondary Education Act.
Right.
No, ESA is the Every Student Succeeds Act, and ESEA is the Elementary and Secondary Education Act.
So we choose the percentage, and so we're always shooting for a goal to reach, instead of saying, well, we'll set it at 60, knowing we'll hit it. You know, we want to raise, continue to raise the bar to challenge ourselves. And Sue does the school improvement grants with all the buildings. We are in school-wide. Each, so she works with all the schools around those that have Title I specifically, and she's going to talk about that at the end, that the public is going to weigh in again on the grant. She did that last year. She posted it and gave the public an option to give feedback on it, so that will also go out again. And we'll make sure it's on Facebook, so people know that that's out there for a public review.
So this next slide that you're seeing is showing our results by grade level, and we have a few bright spots here. We have kindergarten at 77%. We have first grade at 77%. So those two grade levels are meeting our goal. And then you can see the results after that, and this is kind of a trend that we have been seeing in previous years as well, is that we start off in the primary grades with some very high percentages, and then we're getting a little bit lower as we go down.
Sue, kindergarten and first grade, are you seeing a good result because we have, we've invested in pre-K? Do you think that's helped?
That's definitely a factor. Also, the test itself here, what you're seeing is you're seeing the STAR reading, and you're also seeing the STAR early literacy. And so our kindergarten students take the early literacy test, and our first graders take half and half, early literacy and STAR. So it's also a little bit of a different assessment there, so we need to keep that in mind.
I think, just as a matter of fact, I think that our early childhood programming, pre-kindergarten, has a lot to do with what you're seeing in kindergarten and first grade.
I agree with you.
So it gives them a good jumpstart, and I'm happy about that.
And we also have some excellent summer programming through kindergarten jumpstart, which also gives our kindergarten students a head start.
A little extra edge. That's great.
And Sue will highlight what we're doing at the intermediate with Lucy Cawkins program, which is to help support boosting those achievement at the upper level.
The other thing to keep in mind also, when you look at the changes as you go, you know, from kindergarten to eighth grade, is that we have our kindergarten students for that whole year, and we have many of those first graders for kindergarten and first grade, but then we start to see the mobility impacting and kids moving in and out. So in the fall, when I shared with you the data, we were at about 50% of a, you know, in eighth grade, we had about 50% of those kids start kindergarten with us. So it does really have an impact. So moving along, this is adequate yearly growth. So this is a different measure. This is not proficiency. This is a measure that we look at in terms of students' progress from fall to spring over the course of a year. So our adequate yearly growth this year was 67% for K8, and our goal was 70, so we were close.
Sue, can I just ask a question?
Yes.
Maybe an obvious answer, but, so just comparing, so the STAR reading assessment for first grade in the spring of 2019, there was 235 first graders, and then for math in spring of 2019, there was 256. So that difference of 21 kids, is that mobility? Is that absences? Like, why do those numbers fluctuate so much?
The kindergarten does not take the math assessment, and-
But for like first grade, for instance, STAR in spring 2019, there was 235 in first grade, and then in spring 2019, there was 256 that took the math assessment. I'm just comparing first grade to first grade in spring of 2019, so.
Yes.
Oh, because of adequate yearly progress.
No, it's because some of our first grade readers are taking the early literacy, and so there's a difference there.
So if a kid's absent, do they get tested on a different day?
If they do not test in the screening window, then they do not have a score.
Okay, so we know kids are frequently absent, so that plays into it. Okay, thank you.
And with the adequate yearly growth, when we did the data for the adequate yearly growth, we only included students who were present for the fall and spring screening.
Which makes sense to compare.
So all of the students would not show in this.
Okay.
So the numbers for adequate growth and proficiency are going to be different.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Sue.
This next table is showing you by grade level, the adequate yearly growth for reading. And again, we have some bright spots. Kindergarten, 80%, first grade, 78%, and then, you know, close to 70% in second, third, and fourth grade. And then our math proficiency, so now we're moving to math. In the fall, we were 59%, and in the spring, we're at 65%. Our goal was 70, so we're, we're close.
Very good.
And here, you're going to see the proficiency levels for each grade. We don't have a measure for kindergarten, so we start at first grade, and we are at 82% for first grade and above 70% for second and third grade, and fourth at 65%.
Brian, you have a question? I'm sorry, Brian.
Yeah, did you have a question?
More of a comment. So I know we're focusing on 2019, but I think what might be good, at least from my perspective, would be to somehow incorporate some of like maybe the last five years' worth of data, you know, or three years or whatever, and see some of the comparisons to see, okay, you know, it's 65% now, but it was 63 last year, and the year before was 60, or we, you know, so we can actually look at some of the trends, maybe by school, or maybe, not by school, sorry, by grade level, or by, you know, the cumulative as well, just to kind of see some of the trends that are happening.
Yes, I do, I do have that data, and I will forward it to the school committee. So I have about the last eight years, ever since we've started, you know, ever since we started with the STAR testing, and I have that for fall, winter, and spring, so we can get that to you. I can tell you, because I've looked at it a lot, that there are some similar trends that we see. You know, in the fall, we tend to be, you know, in the 50s, and in the spring, we tend to be in the 60s. So every year, you know, overall, this is just overall, we, we tend to see about a 10% increase, and it's been right around where we are this year. Last year was a little bit higher by a couple of percentage points for both the proficiency and the growth. So that's overall, but again, overall doesn't tell the whole picture. It's a big view. So tonight, we hope to get a little bit deeper and show you some things that are happening at the different levels in the system. So this is, yeah, we're going to move along, and this is our adequate yearly growth for math, and we are at 64%, and our goal is 70%. So we're close. This is showing our adequate yearly growth by grade level. And again, these numbers here are going to be different than what you're seeing on the proficiency scores, because this data set is including only students who tested in the fall and the spring. Proficiency is just all students that tested. There's a bright spot in first grade, second grade, third grade. Yeah. So moving along, now we're going to look at some other information and some other data points. So I wanted to share with you tonight a few subgroups. It's really important for us to look at the subgroups, because the subgroups give us information on where we have gaps and also where we have bright spots. So when we look at subgroups such as free and reduced lunch versus- So when we look at subgroups such as free and reduced lunch versus paid lunch, regular attendance versus students that are chronically absent, or kids that are mobile versus kids that have been in the system since kindergarten, you know, we see some big differences. So this first table that you're looking at is showing you in blue, the subgroup of students that are eligible for free and reduced lunch. And in red, you're seeing the subgroup of students that are paid lunch. So this is our economically disadvantaged subgroup in the blue. And you're seeing a big achievement gap and this is shown in the research. This is, you know, what we might expect to see here. But what is nice to see is that the students that we would expect to do well are doing well. Uh, and are at seventy-four percent proficiency in reading and eighty-six percent proficient in math. This next subgroup is attendance and this is a very important measure. This is actually becoming part of our report card for our school district and our schools. And what we're looking at here is students that are chronically absent. And that is defined by students missing ten percent or more of the school days.
And it can be excused and unexcused.
It can be excused and unexcused. So it doesn't matter if it's, you know, out sick, went on a trip, whatever. It's, an absence is an absence. So about ten percent of our students in this dataset, grades one through eight, are chronically absent. Just, just so that you have that reference point. So out of, out of a thousand students, a hundred. Uh, and then you can see there's a difference here and we would expect to see a difference. Students who attend school regularly are going to achieve more and do better than students who are absent. So in reading, we have fifty-one percent proficient in the chronically absent subgroup and sixty-three percent proficient with students who regularly attend. And then in math, it's fifty-two percent for our chronically absent and seventy-three percent for our students who regularly attend. And then this last slide is just going to show you what happens when we combine subgroups. So when we begin to look at factors that we know have a negative impact on student achievement and when those begin to combine for students, there is a, a very big effect, a significant impact on student achievement. So in this table, what you're seeing is students that are chronically absent and eligible for free and reduced lunch versus students that are regularly attending and pay for their lunches. Big, big difference. Yeah. So forty-four percent versus seventy-four percent in reading and forty-five percent versus eighty-six percent in math.
You know where I'm going.
Uh, you're going to mobility? Where are you going, Mr. Kendall?
I would really like to be included in this, uh, those students that are with us.
Yes.
For their, you know, K-
We're, yeah.
K six.
We're working on that data and I can also forward that to the school committee for mobility.
Because part of that is, to me establishes the fact that if we're doing well, which we have in the past within that subgroup, indicates that as a system, we educate our children. And we just need that opportunity. They need to be in attendance. They need to be in our schools uh, for that period of time and we're quite successful. The difficulty comes with mobility and absenteeism and things, but if we look at those students that are with us, they do quite well. And I think we stack up quite well with any of our neighboring schools or any comparison that might be out there for those students that are in our classes on a regular basis and are uh, subject to our curriculum and our teachers, so. To me, that's, that's a highlight that should be part of this report every time. Because I, I think it truly reflects the quality of the education that goes on within this system. We just have to have them in our classes so that we can teach them. And those that are not there skew their, skew their data. Understandably so, but it skews the data. So I would prefer to have uh-
She was work, she, I know. She, you have to include it. She's been working hard and-
You have to include them.
Not to be excused, but she, she is running her school and closing her school and putting this together.
Right.
So, and she can't work on the data until all the data's in, so some of it is timing of when the window closes, when the data's available and crunching the numbers. So not to, we'll get it to you and make sure we have it.
We, we will get it to you and-
Sue said, I'm working hard, Katie.
It will look very, it will look very similar to, to this table that you're seeing right here. This is what it's going to look like. And to reiterate what you just said, we are doing very well with the students that we have and that are with us throughout their schooling, elementary, middle school, high school, because we have them. And there, there are factors that really do have a negative impact on student achievement. You can see that here. It's students that are mobile, students that aren't attending regularly. The, the subgroup, the economically disadvantaged subgroup, that's the achievement gap that we're always working at. And so what we need to do is we need to look at what resources we can provide to the students in the population that we have. And you're going to hear about some of the things that we're doing to help those students.
And I was, yeah, an example is the kindergarten teachers that were at graduation. Sue LaRue, who was the Washburn kindergarten teacher, there were only two students graduating from her kindergarten class. So that gives you a, a good sense of mobility, but on the other hand, I would think East Auburn had a lot that were still in attendance.
Yes. Yes, we did.
Yeah. So you can see the demographics there, just, she was surprised. She was like, wow, there's only two students from my kindergarten class. So, and we try to mitigate mobility when we can. If, if a family's moving, we try to hold them for the year so that students, students don't do a high mobility. Um, even within district, if, if we can manage, I'll call the transportation, you know, can you manage to keep them in the school? If not, you know, we work with the families. Sometimes we can make it work, sometimes we can't. Um, if they move to another district, working with other superintendent to have them stay in the schools. So that we can mitigate as much as we can with mobility, but sometimes we can't. The family has to move, they, they have to move.
That's the way it is today.
You know.
Uh, this, this culture today is very mobile.
Right.
And what the answer is, is what do you do with those kids who are mobile?
Exactly.
They're ours.
And I've had a lot of them myself and, and so when you get them, what do you do? And then looking at the money that we have in terms of grants that have funded programs where you have EdTechs and people to support those kids, just like zing them with them, just get them right on top of those kids. When they come in, because you know already when they come in, you know, I'm preaching to the choir, um, they're already, they're behind.
Yeah.
And so getting them right away, getting them in the programs they need to, giving them support they need at that time is, is the way to mitigate this particular problem.
Right. They're all our students.
They, they, the kid, parents give us the best kids that they have. It's up to us to take them the way they are and to bring them uh, where they can go.
That's why we watch growth and proficiency.
Right.
CLC, the programs like that, the Title Grants are all res- and then the, the um, general fund, those are all the resources that you folks are looking at
Right.
in this for interventions to, to mitigate and deal with the problem. Just a point, Katie, you made me think of, we do internally try to keep our, our students and maintain, help them maintain consistency in their educational, less disruption in their educational program if we can. The city also has a program, um, the Stay-at-Home Rental Assistance Program that they partnered through the CDBG funds to help with that problem as well. So if there's a family that is at risk to go homeless, to be disrupted, or are homeless and have acquired or found a possible apartment or place to stabilize the, the ins- instability and housing, they will have some funds available to help them put down a deposit, pay for securities, get utilities up and running. So that's been, that's been another resource that we've been able to access.
And we know we're a service-oriented city.
Exactly.
And knowing that, we know that we just have to put boots to the ground and say, okay, what are we going to do with it? I mean, we've been, you know, fairly lucky in terms of not having an onslaught of a whole bunch of people coming in at the same time. You know, we could have a lot of them coming in and we, you're going to have some at Fairview School, but that's, that's, they're going to be right next door.
Well, all the apartment, yes, we have-
You're going to have a lot more students.
Four apartment complexes going in.
Right.
Yep, so it's going to look great.
Sue, I think attendance is important too. I think attendance is very important. Um, I was at Fairview for graduation. They did a tremendous job. I know that this one little girl who misses a lot of school. And she should have been on the stage with some awards, but she was not because I feel, because of her absenteeism. On it. So I think it's important to keep kids from staying at home. Somehow we've got to make them want to come, get their evils out or whatever's causing them to get to school.
That's a whole job, yes.
That is a whole job.
And that has been, and you're right, that's what we keep working on, the report. Every month, we watch the attendance rates.
Yes, I know you do.
Um, and we shoot for ninety-five percent. Some, and it was interesting to see, we had patterns of there are certain months that that overall we struggle, like, um, what was it?
February.
February was gone. And I think it's a lot of sickness too, you know, you come out of and people are ill. And then how do you make up when kids are out and then, you know?
I used to go get them at their house.
And of course, coming out of February, low attendance, we go right into the MEA testing in March. So kids have missed a lot of school coming into February, starting in March, and we're, we're on, we're on catch-up instead of, yeah, so. But the schools have been doing things like celebrating attendance, um, giving awards to classrooms that have a high attendance rate. So they've tried to come, they, we work with the state. Michelle's had a state person come in to talk about strategies for attendance to try to help support. And, and we always, you know, there are families that take trips and that's wonderful for the families. And it also impacts because they come back and then there's catch-up again, so. And some students do really well with that and others get overwhelmed.
I don't think that there's one single thing that keeps our kids from performing at ninety-eight percent. I think it's a mixture of everything, that mobility, poverty, absentee, um, just parents.
Stress.
Stress, stress, you're right, Katie.
Lot of stress.
Right, lot of stress. So I think there's many, many things that go into this. It's interesting. I'm not hanging my hat on it, what your report is, because I think there's a lot that's underneath that we need to realize.
Yes. Yes. I'm going to go on and share with you some information about our pre-K program. We had the Department of Education do a site visit this spring and it went very, very well.
Yeah, I want to thank Chrissy Lenehan and all the pre-K teachers. They worked hard. There's major paperwork that goes in.
Team.
And they did outstanding. As you'll see, they met compliance in all areas.
Yes, they met compliance in all areas. There was one area that we are not doing yet, so that wasn't scored, but they met compliance in all the areas that we were doing. And this included the entire program, the data, the classrooms, the different sites, the things they were supposed to have in place at each site, the implementation of the academic program, the curriculum, the screening and assessments, the family and community engagement pieces, the partnerships with different organizations and the transition to kindergarten and meeting the enrollment that needed to be, um, yeah, you know, met by, by the state requirement. And then staffing and classroom management, these areas were part of this as well, teacher quality, professional development, how we're organizing the size of the school and the transportation to and from pre-K. So those were the areas that were looked at. And then these were some of the positive comments here. Our pre-K curriculum provided thematic instruction and allowed ample time for students to have free choice, which is important for a child's development. They were impressed with our incredibly thorough report card and will look to connect with us next year to learn more about our scoring and reporting process.
So they're using Empower Report Card, so there is discussion on moving that to kindergarten because the pre-K parents know the Empower Report Card, so it's natural to have them continue. So they're getting a print-off of their targets, what targets they're supposed to be meeting, and they're, they're getting a lot of information, which I think has been powerful for parents, knowing what they're shooting for, what they're working on at home. So I, that was awesome to be, to get that feedback because the pre-K team has been really, working really hard with Val Ackley. Val Ackley works with them on their reporting. So it's, they, they felt very proud of that and we are too. It's a lot of work and they've done great with that.
Yes. And the last comment was obvious that we take the time to organize dramatic play centers and to schedule events that foster family and community engagement. These were just a couple examples of the positive comments. And I know, I was there when the state came to East Auburn and looked at the pre-K program there. And we, we got such positive feedback all the way around in, in all of our schools and all of our classrooms. So a big shout-out to the pre-K team, as Katie said.
And the great news is last year, they were very worried about filling slots. Chrissy was coming to me, I said, Chrissy, Chrissy, it's going to be all right. Everything's going to work out. And it did. But this year, we're full in several of our pre-Ks, which is good news. We're healthy coming into pre-K for next year. So we've been working on numbers. Some are already full, there are already wait lists, so we're going to continue to work on how do we transport and move kids around so that, that everyone who wants it is able to access it. But Chrissy was so happy. She goes, we're already filled in several, you know, the pressure's off. So that was really good news.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, moving along. This is PBIS at Sherwood Heights.
She's not here, but Andrew, do you want to come up for just a second? Because Washburn, Sherwood, but you can probably share what can they put together, but um, the PBIS is that Positive Behavior Intervention Support. And we had a presentation by Jennifer Butterworth and Jillian Close last year. I think like in the fall, wasn't it, Andrew? And talking about their work. And so we're really excited about Sherwood Heights data for three years. You can see that the bottom line, you want the, it to be lower, obviously, right? The less, so this is data collection. All of our schools, um, our elementary and middle school will use SWISS. And Andrew, you can explain SWISS because you've been using that this year. But every school will be on the system, which will give us some uh, data around impact of PBIS. And, and then you can see how we're paid for them. But Andrew, do you want to explain some of the work you're doing at Washburn?
Sure. We implemented SWISS this year. Um, just SWISS is a computer online program where the teachers in real time can document the behaviors. Um, and then they use that to define where, what, why, to help answer those questions. So in the cafeteria at twelve o'clock, disruption. So then we can break it down and really kind of focus in our meetings to see what and where things are happening to make adjustments as needed. So with our data, our SWISS data, we didn't do SWISS last year. We ca- we did a different record and ours went down significant, just like Sherwood Heights do to some of the work that we've done with PBIS and having that common language in having expectations that all students will learn and have, behave in the classroom. So that's where we are.
Do you want to explain the power of the check-in, check-out process for Tier Two?
Yeah. So part of the process is we do have a check-in, check-out process. Um, students are either self-referred, parent-referred, teacher-referred, staff-referred, Mr. Bard-referred. Um, and so they have a clipboard with them for the full day and it's broken by chunks. It's a teachable moment for the child after every section of their day, morning meeting, math, literacy. And they rate themselves with their teacher, one, two, three, and at the end of the day, they calculate their goal. After so many days, they move to a different process, self-monitoring, where we change their goals depending on what they need. So it's a constant conversation with our PBIS coach, Jennifer, the teachers, myself, and my PBIS team. So it, it has been very effective. We've had several students graduate from the program. We've had several students move to self-monitoring. Um, some kids just wanted to stay on for the full year because they liked it. So we've had some pretty significant changes at Washburn.
Numbers, numbers of students that are- Yeah, PBIS.
Yep. Um, well, PBIS is just the framework. So, and the Tier Two, you, you want to think of that PB, that tier triangle and you want fifteen percent of the kids being within that. So we're around thirty-two kids on the check-in, which is about thirteen percent of our student population.
And so, and I know you're going to talk about later at the district level, but we meet once a month as a district management team to discuss each school, where the bright spots of school, where the challenge of the school, so that I can support administrative- to discuss each school, where are the bright spots of school, where are the challenges of the school, so that I can support administrators. So we work as a team to look at, do we have what's in place to make sure the framework is successful? And Jennifer and Gillian really talk through each school. And then at the building level, they have P B I S teams. I know, Celeste, Stephanie, you have a team at Fairview, so it's not just Title One, it's all schools. And Bob's gonna talk about what his school's doing, because he's been very invested with his staff, with Jennifer Butterworth for P B I S at the middle school. And then I know Scott has done a preliminary work with her on looking at what they're doing at the high school level. So it's, it's systemic, it's, we oversee, then every building, then the teachers, and they're all gonna have data to show. Because the goal here is if they're in class, they're learning. If they're out of class, they're not learning. So the goal is, they need to be in class, they need to be safe in class and allow others to learn. So it also gives opportunities, we know you approved Walton having an Ed Tech Three to help support the behaviors there. And then they're gonna mirror what Andrew's school is doing to support. And so, and I know Bob's goal is to have his interventions do some of that work. So as, probably, as you know, the next budget season, we'll be looking at the other schools getting similar support. But they all work together, even Fairview, who doesn't have the same level of resources necessary, is doing an incredible job with their work with Positive Behavior Support. So thank you, because it's a framework and there's a lot going on.
I've been in, I've been in, you know, both Walton and, and Washburn, and it's phenomenal. And it works, and it's labor-intensive on the part of you folks who are doing the job. But the kids really feed off of that, they really love it, they really need that structure, and it's working. And I commend you folks on, on that, it really is working.
Okay. Thank you, Andrew.
We are funding that initiative through both the general fund and through title grants. And we have some stipend positions that we're hoping to put in place in the fall to continue to support this in the district.
That would be great.
So moving along.
So Bob's coming up.
Yes, Bob's coming up.
Hi, good evening. I'd like to highlight something that has been really important work we've begun at the, at the middle school. That's gonna frame our work ahead next year around our, our goal-setting for schools, goal-setting for me professionally. And that's where, and we're just beginning to get the, the feedback right now. But we underwent a comprehensive New England League of Middle Schools' school-wide assessment. A very comprehensive thing that we went through many, many weeks. They surveyed, began with surveys of every single student, every single staff member, surveyed of parents. They were incredibly impressed with the number of parents who replied. They said they typically get between twenty-five and fifty, we had close to one hundred and eighty.
Oh, wow.
Parents who, who replied to this, this survey. So the New England League of Middle Schools in doing this work looks at all facets of middle-level education and what it looks like at Auburn Middle School. That's based on the research that is known about middle-level learning and what those best practices are. They then came to our school, spent most of a week right here in Auburn, they stayed in town, they got to know our town. They were at school by six-thirty in the morning, they were there still five o'clock in the evening. It was a team of veteran educators from Massachusetts, from here in Maine, also New Hampshire, numeracy expert, literacy expert, retired administrators, who came together to give us some very, very honest feedback on Auburn Middle School and, and what we're doing. While they were there, there were focus groups they had with students, there was a focus group they had with parents, they had face-to-face conversations with every single staff member, and they spent time in every single classroom at the school. So again, they're, they're in the process of putting together a really comprehensive report highlighting all of the great things we have to celebrate and then helping us focus the things that, as I see, will not only be summer work going, going ahead. We have an incredible NELMS advisory team, support staff, teachers are gonna be doing some summer work around this, and then we're gonna, again, use that to frame our goals and our professional development planning. So just to share a few highlights that, that we're beginning to get, to get back, that they're sharing with us. So you know, A M S clearly has a dedicated teaching staff, all working towards the same goals of student success, learning targets. They found posted in every single classroom in the school and updated on a daily basis. The instructional coach, a very valuable resource that, that staff reported. Staff is firmly committed to the new leadership. And Core Time, which is how we start every single day, close to sort of an advisor, advisee time, fosters healthy relationships between teachers and students, we do that each day. We have an active student council, and students report overwhelmingly that they feel safe at school, and the faculty and staff are overwhelmingly committed to Auburn Middle School. So those are just sort of some of the preliminary things that we're beginning to get back from, from this group. But again, I think that's gonna be really powerful, and there are gonna be a lot of, you know, many, many things for us to celebrate. And then it's gonna help us frame the things that we need to, we need to get better with.
And those are a couple of things here.
Yep, and here we're, you know, some of the recommendations that they're beginning to come out with. You know, make provisions for collaboration in content areas within and across grade levels to ensure a consistent learning experience for all students. They strongly encourage implementation of P B I S, will provide opportunities to increase student engagement, create common opportunities for grade, grade-level teams to interact and collaborate, develop whole-school opportunities for communication, such as periodic morning assemblies, to enhance a sense of whole-school community. And communication is one key to success. A M S should assess its current processes to determine if they are accomplishing the goal of clear, concise, and consistent communication to all stakeholders. So that's a lot right there. You know, and again, these are ju, just some pieces, but this is work that, you know, we are gonna be taking, taking this feedback. Again, we have a team looking at it, it's gonna be much of the work I do this summer, but a really unique and powerful opportunity to have a group of outside middle-level experts come to Auburn and, and do this work for us.
Thank you, Bob. You're gonna, you can come back after.
Yeah, come back.
I just, I just wanted to make a statement, I wanted to thank Bob for coming to Auburn Middle School, because I, I've been there a few times and communicated with you and taken, taken a look at what's going on. You're really making a difference in that school. And this is a very difficult age group, it's my favorite age group. And you gotta be a little nutso to be able to handle it, but, you know, you really understand what, where you're at, where you need to bring your school and your, and your students and your teachers, and you've got the teachers behind you. I have heard so many good comments and compliments on your behalf, and I just wanted to say thank you for coming. And I think, my, my grandson is a perfect example, has not been a negative comment, and he really feels supported. So you're doing a fabulous job, thank you for coming.
Thank you, and I appreciate that, and I am, I'm incredibly happy to be here.
I know you are.
And I am, I'm excited and happy and hopeful every single day I, I walk into Auburn Middle School.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Next is the graduation rate.
Good evening. Sure, what you have is the comparison of two thousand eighteen and what we are sitting at unofficially for two thousand nineteen. There are many filters that, that goes through, but really what it starts with is, so you started in two forty-four when they entered in, in, as ninth graders in two thousand fourteen. And so of that, seventy-seven point eight seven percent graduated in four years, that's the four-year completer. Fifty-four did not, and of those, this is the breakdown of where that looks, and this was, like I said, this was last year. Three finished in five years, and oftentimes that reflects the students through the I E P process, that they have determined that a fifth year as far as their transition plannings, that's what occurs. And so those conversations happen, eighth grade, ninth grade, get really intensified, tenth grade. And so that the eleventh, twelfth, and that fifth year is really part of the equation. But that's added in there, and that is not, that is held against us, just so you know. Twenty-two of our students moved on to adult education and seven since then have graduated, so that's a pretty good turnaround from there. And then twenty-nine discontinued school, and so that catches lots of categories. That is, and that's where we've spent a lot of time really talking about our truancy, and what does that look like and what does that mean? So when we have a student that's truant, we are like a dog on a bone going after them. We collaborate with Ms. McClellan quite regularly, we're contacting D H H S, we're working with the police department, we're working with families. And so when we started the conversation tonight, it's a thirty thousand view from the way down. Once you start getting into the weeds and start talking about those, oftentimes they are students who truly have left Auburn but never re-enrolled in another school. So because of that, they sit on our books. And so that, those, that twenty-nine discontinued. When we, when we look at from the traditional sense of the dropout, the kid that just says, I'm not doing high school, I'm not gonna go to Edward Little, I'm not gonna go to Oxford Hill, you know, that's that model that we think of from way back when. That's not what it looks like now. I think earlier tonight, we talked about that conversation of mobility, that happens quite often. And so we do a lot of outreach, we have a lot of communication with Lewiston, because we have a lot of partnerships of students going back and forth. They still stay on our books until they enroll in another school. And so when you look at that twenty-nine, that, that is heartbreaking to think, but many, many, many of those are students who have left Auburn and haven't enrolled in another school. So that's why I would say that is the lens to look at it, that doesn't mean that we're satisfied with that.
And we don't know if they went to an adult ed in another district.
That is another whole challenge in and of itself, because it's easy for us to be able to track our kids who stay within our building and attend adult ed, but if they were, and there are some that are sitting, we have been a dog with a bone with this year's unofficial results, where like, well, what do you mean? That hold, we know that they went to this school and they enrolled in adult ed, or that was their plan. Because when they, oftentimes when they leave us and say that I am disenrolling from day school and that I'm going to adult ed, that, we have to document that plan, we have to follow that plan back up within a year to say, are you enrolled in adult ed? Have you graduated from adult ed? And it, yeah, we're sending certified letters to families who say, yes, they've moved to South Carolina. Their plan was to go to adult ed while they were there, but that hasn't happened yet. And so they still sit on our books as a discontinued student. With, again, which is not to say that we're satisfied with that. And so as we move through the process here tonight, you'll see some of the steps that we're doing, but. So when we look over, that was seventy-seven last year, we're at seventy-eight point seven-one this year. And again, you start with, and that, if you've, if you've met one of my assistant principals, Eric Gray, like, he has, this has been his full-time job of, I'm getting everyone across the stage, God, I'm getting everyone across the stage, it's gonna happen, it's gonna happen. And so when I had to take him back to the data, isn't about how we started their senior year, but we have to go back to when they started as freshmen, he, it was a punch in the gut for him, because he worked so diligently at it this year. So very comparable and similar, but we also wanted to highlight, again, we had some students and they are transfers, but they, they don't stay on our books, those students, and it was a really good opportunity for those kids to go to Job Corps, which is a growing area, which is in Bangor, where not only are they doing their high school skills, but they're also developing a career after that. A lot of times it's in the trades, it's specific, it would be very comparable to L R T C, but it's a full-time school. But that's held against us. The thirty-three with the adult education, we don't have all the data culled just yet on how many of our thirty-three, whether they went in the fall or they went in January, to see where they stepped across the stage for an adult ed graduation. We're still pulling that data. And then again, we have seventeen that discontinued school, and that's a drop, and I'm kind of proud of that. But again, it still follows in those kids that haven't enrolled in another school. We've had people tracking down kids, I saw them walking across over on Lisbon Street, Lewiston, and we pull up, and it's Saturday afternoon, saying, I gotta see you on school on Monday, I gotta have your mom call me, I gotta have you do this. And it doesn't always meet with success. And so again, I tell you that it's not that typical, I drop out of school and I'm going to get a job, which I think is what we play in our mind. Again, it's not something that we strive for, but we continue to look at from our numbers perspective. In the earlier slides, as we were putting this together, it did have some trends. To come back to the question about what does it look like five years ago? And so we were here, we made our way up to eighty, we went down, and now we're on our way back up over the last three years, and I'm kind of proud of that. And if you've met my admin team, they get pretty competitive. And so the competition is pretty fierce coming right now out of the freshman group of, and, and I mean that in a healthy way, like, they really wanna see students succeed and they wanna get them across the stage, and, and it's a big deal. And so that competition is happening, and we are tracking data from their freshman year to their sophomore year. In years past, what we would do is really start looking at coming out of their junior year. And in, over the last two years, it's been a point of emphasis on my part, is to say, why are we waiting till their junior year? We know that some of those risk factors are happening in their freshman year. And so we've started to, and we'll get to that, we've started to implement things their freshman year, their sophomore year, and really start tracking that data coming out. Another piece that I would share with this, as we started to, as I started to really push the team on saying, where are we in comparison to others? The scope, and I, I would have to go back and look at my notes, but schools of our size and our demographic, when we compare them around the state, and we're talking about Portland and Deering, we're talking about Lewiston, we're talking about Bangor, Sanford, Bath, Brunswick, we range from seventy-six to about eighty-three percent, and, for their graduations and graduation rates. And so that's different than the overall state graduation rate, which is a little higher than that. But when we put ourselves in comparison to our comparables, and I, like I said, it didn't do all the comparables, because when you go on the D O E spreadsheet, it's long, and it, so you really have to cull through and go through that. I was kind of pleased in the aspect that we're kind of in that middle ground of the seventy-three to eighty-three percent of where we landed. That is not what we're striving for, but it kind of gives us a gauge of where we are in our comparables. And I, I only offer that so that you had, as we're looking at our five-year, our three-year trends, but where are we looking at our comparables?
And I, and I have to comment, our adult ed program does amazing work. And so some of you were at graduation, hear the stories of what our students overcome. You can tell why they didn't do it in four years in a box that we've created. You know, to say, students must do it in four years, when there are a lot of factors that kids are dealing with. So I'm always proud to see a lot of kids that Michelle and the staff work with, that you hear their name over and over, but then they, you see them on adult ed, their parents are elated, they're elated that they did accomplish it. No, you didn't do it in the traditional timeframe. And that's why we're looking, as you said earlier, for you, looking at different programs for those type of students, because we've gotta have some flexibility or some mentor support for those students that are hitting crisis. It could be mental crisis, physical, I mean, a student gets a concussion, and suddenly they're out for, you know, half the year, that gets them behind. But it, you know, it's a lot, they get pregnant and they have to, you know, so there's a lot of things. Franklin helps a lot with the dropout as well, with their Franklin numbers.
It's a good alternative.
So I think we do, Bill Webster's, Bill Grant is always very proud of the amount of students that graduate from the Auburn Adult Ed Program. So we should feel good about that, but at the same time.
We should, we really should.
The state doesn't recognize what a great job our kids do to get through, even if it takes them ten years.
But you know, the good thing is, we're giving not, one size doesn't fit all.
Exactly.
And we're giving a number of alternatives. And life has its, its, its changes and its unexpected, you know, roadblocks. But to be able to always be open and let the kids, you know, give them the alternatives, where would you like to go? You can, you have different ways where you can achieve that overall, you know, graduation, you know, your, your diploma. And I know that the adult education rate is, is higher than it was the previous year. Why? I mean, it could be a good thing, I'm not saying it's a bad thing. But I know you're doing everything you can to follow the child, you know how we always say, follow the child to see where do they go? How do we, how do we know, are they still here? You know, so that is important, to follow those, those students, to see where they are going. And if we see them, I mean, I would pull them off the street, say, come on back to school here, we're gonna talk a little bit. But it's great that you're doing that, it's great that you're staying on top of the students, because sometimes they just need a little nudge. Sometimes they just need somebody to believe in them and say, look, you really need to get back to school, you, you've got great potential, you just need to be there and do the time, and let's help you do that, whichever way is best. So I'm glad that you're following them and you're staying on top of it, thank you very much for that. And giving them the alternatives, they really do, they really do need that, that's great.
And we're public education, so we have to provide an education.
Come one, come all.
One, right, exactly. So my question-
So my question is, I have two questions. The first one is, are Franklin's numbers here?
Yes.
Yes.
So they reflect Franklin too?
Correct.
Okay. And my second thing is, you said instead of starting in the junior year, you're starting in freshman.
Definitely.
I would like to see us start in the eighth grade because the, the results of the, of the testing is not good in eighth grade, no matter what we do. So I would like to see something starting in the eighth grade to say, "Scott, you need to go to school, you need to pass, you need to walk across that stage, Scott, what are you doing?"
I think that's a great idea.
And I'm sure it's happening.
Bob is our, yes.
Yes, and I'm sure it's happening, but I, I think that we need to.
We need to do more.
We need to do more.
Absolutely need to do more.
Right. The earlier we can get the kids that are potential dropouts, the better our, our graduation rate will be.
Well, I would, I would offer two, two insights into that. One, I was asked by one of the middle school seventh grade teams to come down and talk about some, talk to some of their students who were struggling. Their staff invited me to come down and talk about what the implications of developing those healthy habits of work for them right now in seventh grade to help build a good base for themselves through the middle school and why that would translate well to high school, and gave them an opportunity to talk about what 24 credits actually look like. And then the other piece that, when you say we, you know, what those test results look like, so my staff has been hearing pretty, pretty regularly, and it's going to become over and over, is, "Does this increase achievement and does this increase the graduation rate?" And that's been a chant that they have, it's building momentum, and so that's the filter that we use. And so they're, they're, they're separate, but they're the same. And so that, we don't have a credit to talk about coming out of the middle school, but what we do can have is to try to utilize some of that data. And so what their MEA looks like and what ours looks like is a little different. And so I think Shelley has talked to you a little bit about some of the work that she's done in, in implementing PSATs coming out of the ninth grade and 10th grade. And so that's where we've tried to land as far as, can we have a measuring device to try to be able to track their achievement right then and there from ninth grade rather than wait till the optional PSAT and now they're taking the SAT, which for us is our MEA, their junior year. So Shelley has done some really good work there, and now it's to try to get some COGS aligned, so we have a device that can help do that rather than it just be anecdotal. Because over the years, staff have really shared a lot of good anecdotal information, but we haven't had something that you could put your hat on and say, "This is a chunk of data." And to come back to what we talked about earlier, when you talk about absenteeism and you, that's a huge issue, we talk about mobility. And the other one that I would add in there is trauma, all influence, all of those pieces. And so you can get pockets of those, you know, and, but for the middle school and the high school, it all lands there because there's no comparison. We are our one and only entity. And so that chronic absenteeism is a, is a significant thing. And so really, that's where we try to head it off right out of the gate, because that's where one of the, the symptoms that we see starting to manifest themselves. And so it becomes that they're, they're struggling, whether it's with their achievement, but there's a lot of mobility that's going on in their lives, there's a lot of trauma that's gone in their lives. And so where do we start building that support? Because we have a good metric, the outcome. How many credits have you earned? How did you score on the SAT? And did you graduate? So they're easy to see, but the, the work has to happen that aren't necessarily linked directly to that.
So we need to remember that our community just voted for a new school. And many people, right or wrong, are hanging their hats on, "Well, grades need to improve, test scores need to improve, graduation requirements need to improve, all within a new building." Okay? It's not the building, it's great to have our building, but it's what's happening on the inside that's important, so.
There will be some subtle ways that that has the opportunity to be able to support that. So if you, you know, I know you have, but when we've had conversations in terms of building neighborhoods and building learning communities, that has the opportunity to be able to influence that.
Good point.
Because as we talked about, why adult ed sometimes becomes really successful for kids, is that there's less movement in the building and that it gets very overwhelming for students oftentimes for a variety of reasons of moving from point A to point B and having a thousand people around you really takes them out of their learning mode. And so there's the opportunity to be able to create some of those communities to do that, and that they really perform better in smaller settings. And so as the building is being programmed and developed, we've allowed for those opportunities for spaces to be supporting that. So that's why I would say there's some subtle ways to do that, but there's also a lot of work that needs to happen on student achievement and student graduation, that it's not about the building, but the building does lend itself to be able to supporting that. When we start talking about those program offerings and some other things that we're going to explore as a building, that's really to try to get at student engagement and try to get closer contact with adults, with students, so we can identify things long before they reach their junior year and we're scratching their head why they have eight credits and they should be on pace at around 18.
Some of the less subtle is the, the pathways will be broadened for student, for more students through the vocational, the additional vocational pieces.
Yeah, yeah, much more options.
This sounds like a, a good segue into planning ahead for next year in terms of professional development. This really is a big thing. I mean, I recall going through that in middle school, high school, transitioning. Those, middle school, right off, that first year of the two years, you know those kiddos. Right off, you know where you're headed. And that's the time to do it. And you're hearing it from the sixth grade teachers, from the elementary.
Right, exactly.
So, so if we could embed that as part of our, you know, your, your, your time that you're working together, professional development time, to me, that's going to go miles. And I'm just saying, I would like to see that, you know, be a part of that.
Before you go off that slide, so I just want, I think you, tell your, your assistant principals that it's just noteworthy that the class of 2018 was a smaller class than the class of 2019. But if you look all the way down and compare the number of students who went to adult ed in both years and the number of students who discontinued, we moved that needle, they moved that needle in the right direction, and they, they should feel very good about that.
Good job. Thank you very much.
Don't go anywhere.
Yeah, you've got more slides.
This kind of highlights some of, some other information for you to be able to, to ponder. When we start talking about, we're talking about graduation rates, and we just spent a lot of time talking about what didn't happen. Here's some successes of what did, and some of the work that's happened from a curriculum standpoint, from a professional development standpoint for student offerings. In 2017, we had 57 students took 95 exams. The following year, 57 students took 91 exams. And this one was, we're really proud of this year, we had 88 students that took 121 exams. And so a lot of that is, there's a lot of factors that go into that. Some of that is more course offering, some of that is having mentorships to really say, "You can do this." Because a lot of times, kids will take an AP course, but not necessarily take the exam because sometimes they're not feeling confident about it and not feeling like they're prepared for that, or does it have value to them? And so those are twofold, one, to really inspire the kids to feel like they can do that, and that we've increased those offerings to make it available because some of those exams were, they're available to anybody, but if you haven't taken the course, sometime, you know, you're really setting yourself up to be in a hole there. So we've increased, typically in years past, you started to see your AP courses happening, your junior and then your senior year. We've been able to develop with the curriculum work, with our staff, with coming out of eighth grade into ninth grade, they would take a pre-AP course so that they're prepared to take an AP course their sophomore year. And so that was a significant bump for us, and we've seen that. And another place that we've been supported is with our good friend, Dr. Doris here, who through Title IV funding, has been able to make the tuition for the exam available for more students. There was a time many, 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 many years ago where we supported the exams, and then over the course of time, we weren't, for budgetary reasons, being able to support the exams for students. And that, you know, first it was a reduction, and then it was, "We can't at all." And now through the Title IV funding, we've been able to support kids who may not necessarily have taken the exam because of financial hardship. So that's also been able to help us support, bring those up.
Over the past two years, I've heard, "Oh, we've decreased, Edward Little has decreased the amount of AP courses on it, and nobody has said anything to rebut that." So how many re-AP courses do you have, do we have?
Oh, I'd have to, I've only been looking at what we're adding and what we're losing. We've been adding over the, you know, there was a time when, and there was a lot of factors that went into that, some of that had to do with the schedule. And so there was some adjustments that happened when we moved to a block schedule. And then just, sometimes you could offer it, but you need to have the staff expertise and their certification and training and able to be able to do that. And so I think with some of the stability with the staff, they've been able to take on those tasks. We've tried to promote them to be able to do that, so we've been able to increase their offerings to be able, I couldn't walk in and just say, "I'm going to teach you an AP English class." I have to build the curriculum, it has to match the AP. And that's very labor-intensive on the staff's part. So you've got to have someone willing to do it.
Shelley says eight.
Yeah, we just got a single.
Now, this is.
That's good.
The reason I put this up here is, I hear about the rating of the high school being a one on the great schools thing that has been talked.
Or zero.
Zero, well, it's because of the great thing aside. So one of the data points that they pull is the AP participation data. So that was part of our goal, is to raise that. Now, what we don't know, what other high schools do, and we can certainly look at is, is do they mandate every student AP class takes the AP exam? And I'm going to say they do. We do not. It's choice. That, I think hurts us in our data, that we don't say, "You will, and we will pay for it, and you're going to take it, whether you score well or not, but you're going to do it." That would raise that number. So there are things we have to decide, that if we're, if we want to compete in the great schools stuff, that's, one of the areas is the AP placement. The other thing Scott and I are looking at is co-curricular seems to be an area, whether next year we add more stipend, and that helps with our co-curricular data. So I wanted to share that we are working on this area to encourage students to take the AP exam. We're encouraging it by paying for it, but we have not made it our policy that if you take an AP exam, you take it. So, I mean, AP class, you take the exam. So that's something we would have to look at, but I, these are factors that play into some of that rating that, that happens. And I also want to share, I know it's come up again, that we're rated one. I have contacted the company, I have talked, you know, I, I was telling Michelle the other day, "Do I have to fly to headquarters, wherever headquarters may be for these? It's probably a little office with some..." Because they use different datas on different high schools, which I tried to point out to them, that our data was different than Lewiston's data, why were they not in the same year, and didn't get much of response. So I want you to know, we do take that seriously, we do want our number to be higher, and we're working towards trying to do that. But this is an area. Because Michelle and I had talked about when I was going over the great schools about how many AP exams and AP courses and so forth, so.
I applaud you for going after that.
I, I, well, we're trying.
I know you are, you're doing good.
And the other piece.
It'll be good when it goes up.
This doesn't highlight all of the colleges that students have been accepted to, but we had 124 college acceptances by our students from the graduate, this current graduating class. And I, I would be hard pressed not to be proud of that.
Right, that's a lot to be proud of.
Another criteria that we are held to is our NEASC, which is our certification. They're 10-year cycles, and so we submitted our fifth-year one last year. And it is a lot of work, even when you're not at the 10-year mark. Yeah, I, yeah, it's a lot of work, and it's a lot of commitment by some very, very dedicated staff to put that all together. And there's, we're highlighting three of the 22 positive comments. And so what happens is you get your accreditation, and they, they give you things that you need to work on at a two-year implement, a five-year, and then the follow-up from your five-year, and that gives you time to be able to prepare for your 10-year accreditation. So when we received the three-year mark in order to submit the five-year, the visual is better, this does, it was, it was this long, it was 27 components, and we were able to flip that, coming out of last year, down to not 27 areas of needing to be addressed, recommendations to positive comments. So that meant that we've made progress on those, and they felt comfortable with what we were doing. So it was no longer seen as an, I wouldn't even call, they don't say it's an area of deficit, and they don't even, and they don't say it's an area of growth, I'd have to go back. They have specific terminology, but what they're telling you is, you need to demonstrate some growth and progress on that. And so what I'm really proud of is that we were able to flip and be able to get ourselves down to three or four areas that we need to continue to work on, and that the other areas where you've made the growth that we were looking for, and that it's a positive comment, it's a commendation for you. And so those would be the significant progress in the major capital school construction project, which is the new building. That was first and foremost, front and center, our first area that we needed to address. Unfortunately, where we were, when you look at the timeline, when we were getting ready to craft the, when we were getting the three-year report, in order to create the five-year report, it was right there, front and center, you, this needs to be addressed. And so fortunately, we were able to provide the documentation that we've been approved for the new construction project. And so through the, through filing that report, we had to demonstrate, wasn't that we were approved, but that we were as a community moving forward with that and that we had the support for that. The other one, which was really, this is, it says a lot, and it, it's like the everyday action that's happening, "The degree to which curriculum offerings emphasize depth of understanding and application of knowledge, their inquiry and problem solving, higher-order thinking, cross-disciplinary learning, authentic learning opportunities, and the informed and ethical use of technology." That's all in one thing. So that's why I say, you've got to have a really committed group of people to start pulling that apart and being able to demonstrate evidence in an authentic way. You can't just say that you're doing it, you have to provide evidence that that's happening. And so that is like everything that's going on all day long, and being able to pull the evidence together to be able to satisfy what they're looking for of inquiry-based, problem-solving, cross-curriculum, and using technology. Those are things that the NEASC is looking for. They are looking for the use of technology for problem-solving, they are looking for cross-content work, they are looking for applications, which I think we utilize those terms often as best practice, but it goes beyond best practice, it's what NEASC is looking for. And then another area that we, they, we weren't cited for, but they emphasized the use of, they had different terminology, but our development of our grade nine teams for the purpose of analyzing data in order to identify the needs and supports of instructional strategies. So we've just completed year two of that, so we were able to, we had some evidence coming out of year one, we have more evidence this year, which we'll show at another slide. That was something that was important, and it kind of comes back to how, how we're already looking at students coming out of grade nine to be able to do that. There are some staff that are part of the grade nine cohort who are looking to specialize into some project-based work. And at some point in time, that's when we'll start to try to identify some of the eighth graders that are, that that would be more advantageous to. But first and foremost, they want to get some project-based professional development under their belt and have some opportunity to implement that for a year before we start looking at funneling students into that. But I want to highlight the fact that we developed that two years ago, and it was something that they commented as a positive for us. The recommendations, these are the things that they say that used to be 27 miles long, 27 bullets long, we've now been able to shrink it down. Provide updates on the status of the school construction project, so we'll continue to do that. Provide updates on the extent to which teachers are using school-wide rubrics. We, we have developed them, have we shown evidence of being able to utilize them across, not with enough confidence yet. And so that is something that we could say that's good practice, but we really need to, again, we need to hold that as a standard of something that we need to be implementing school-wide and be able to demonstrate evidence for. And then ensure that teachers reflect upon, document, and utilize instructional practices, that personalize instruction, engage students in cross-disciplinary learning, apply acquired knowledge, skills, authentic tasks, integrate the use of advanced technology across all areas to support achievement of the school's 21st century learning expectations. So if you want to join us when we start crafting that response, by all means, please do so. But in essence, what that is really going to come down to is to providing evidence of the growth that when we're using the PDCA in a Marzano framework, how we're not just using that, but how that influences what's going on into the classroom. And so that's been a lot of growth for us in the building. And I don't necessarily look at it as a negative, I look at that as continuing to have that goal right straight in front of us of utilize the PDCA, utilize the, the framework that we're implementing so that it does hit those pieces, because that's, that's where it hits the road, that's talking about the instructional practice in the classroom. And so for us, it's to be able to build some evidence of how doing that is having an outcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Up to good work.
Yay. We're getting there, we only have a few more. We're getting there. We only have a few more.
So, we've been looking at the results up to this point. And now, we're going to take a look at the factor that leads most directly to the results we've been talking about, and that's our greatest resource, which is our teachers. So, we're going to talk a little bit about PEPG, which is, again, the... I always do this when I sit at this microphone. Isn't that awful? Yeah, performance evaluation, professional growth system, which is our teacher evaluation and our administrator evaluation system. So, you just heard from Scott how... what a perfect tie-in about the professional growth plan, the PDCA, right? And so, we can say now that all of our teachers have a professional growth plan. That has been developed to the great... to a great extent with choice. So, teachers' voice and choices in that they're identifying the goals that align with the school and the district goals in their professional growth plan, as well as areas in their own professional growth that they need to and want to improve upon. There are some cases where it's more directed. If a teacher's experiencing some difficulty, they would have a PDCA as well, but it would be more directed, along with their administrator, to try to get at those areas that need to improve in order to improve their performance. So, you can see that the... every teacher has a PDCA. It's based on the student growth and performance, as well as implementing those best practices identified in the curriculum, the professional curriculum. Every teacher's receiving feedback, and from multiple sources, we are... we get feedback from teachers, and they are seeing the feedback as relevant and calibrated amongst the evaluators in their buildings. So, that was good news to hear, that they're seeing as relevant to a great extent, and that is calibrated.
Calibrated. I'm trying to understand the use of that term.
Sure.
In that context. Could you expand upon that?
So, that across our... across the school, let's use Scott for example, they have four evaluators, and they feel that they're pretty well... whether it's Scott that's coming in to observe, or Mr. Gray, or Mr. Latusha, that they are calibrated in their assessment of... and their scoring, or feedback, rather, to the teacher.
You mean, they're on the same plane?
They're on the same page, yeah.
They're all doing things. And the same is true across the district. So, to a great extent, they're feeling like, "Yeah, this is fair feedback. It's relevant to what I'm doing, and I can apply it in my own situation." They also... the feedback that we've heard is that the collaborative times supports the professional development. That came across very loud and clear over the course of this year. Through the PEPG Steering Committee, we hear it almost every single meeting, that those... the PLCs, which are the professional learning communities that happen during the school day, perhaps a planning period time where teachers are coming together, having collaborative and collegial conversations, early release time has been seen as very valuable, as well as the workshop days, of course. So, I was able to look quickly at the end-of-the-year data through the evaluation system, and how... where are our strengths as a district? Where are teachers showing particular strength in those research-based best practices that you've heard referenced here through the Marz... We use the curriculum... we call it curriculum of the Marzano-focused framework identified there. And you can see here some of the areas of strengths that we're seeing consistently, and our teachers are implementing as they're intended to be implemented. They're looking like they should in the classrooms. High expectations for all students. We're very proud of that. I think, Scott, you spoke to that earlier, that all students are... have high expectations. And the research points that if that's in place, that you... that students will rise to that expectation. Relationships is another area that our teachers do particularly well at. Those student-centered relationships that will affect particularly those students who may be experiencing trauma or adverse childhood experiences in their life, that these are the things that research shows can help overcome and help students be successful at school and eventually in life. Acknowledging rules and procedures that are happening in the classroom. There are clear rules and procedures in classrooms, and students are being acknowledged for that. PBIS is another thing that, you know, we try to align our arrows. It's going to help us keep increasing that, that positive feedback about pro-social behavior. And then, our teachers do very well at engaging in professional development, engaging in collaborative and collegial conversations. And so, they maintain their expertise, and they move into leadership within their building, which takes all kinds of forms. We need many leaders in our buildings. We can't do it alone with just one administrator. Some areas that we continue to focus on with teachers, and these are generalizations. We have teachers who are knocking these out of the park. But as a generalization and looking at the data, identifying critical content. What that means is when you hear talk about targets and scales, that those... the students know what the critical content is. What are we learning today? What is it that I'm working toward to demonstrate proficiency? So that it's very transparent. So, we need to continue to build up the ways that we're doing that in our classrooms. And then, to follow up with that is students tracking their own progress. So, students know where they... what the targets are, what they're learning in this unit, and then they're able to engage in monitoring their own progress toward meeting that proficiency target. And then, finally, again, it ties in nicely, that feedback and celebration loop. How do students know how they're doing along that course of learning within that unit? Are they getting regular feedback? Is it feedback that they understand? Is it timely and just right, as we sometimes like to say? And then, are we celebrating along the way as students are meeting those milestones? So, that's a real quick little glance into behind the scenes on what's happening with our teachers.
I'm glad you mentioned the student-centered relationships. There's been some scuttlebutt around town that that's what we need to emphasize in the system. And quite frankly, that's been emphasized since long before I retired. So, I'm glad that you mentioned it. I think the teachers do a wonderful job with that, and they really need to be commended, and it shows with our kids. Thank you.
Well, you know that that's been an emphasis, social, emotional, academic, physical safety in our schools for a long, long time in Auburn. Any other questions?
We're good.
Back to you, Sue.
Now, we're going to take a look at the next steps, because we've given you this picture of what's going on in our schools and a big picture of what's going on in our district. And we want to share with you some of our initiatives and our next steps at the elementary, middle school, and high school levels. So, as far as the district, we have a parent advisory group that we've started up. And the purpose of the group is to promote parent and family engagement and to provide input on educational programming. And this is a great group. They have done wonderful work so far. We have just identified our values and beliefs to inform and guide the revision of the family engagement policies. So, you'll hear more about this next year. We also... Michelle just talked about our PEPG system, and that's the Performance Evaluation Professional Growth. We have a steering committee right now, which is made up of teachers and administrators and district administrators as well. And the teachers in this group serve as a liaison between the school and the district. And this group is reviewing and refining the PEPG system. We meet once a month throughout the year. And we are also working to design professional development for the Marzano elements. And then, the CIA. Shelley, do you want to talk about that? Love this name, CIA.
I know, the CIA is coming.
Yeah, we still want to get some secret badges or something. Yeah, this is a committee we started this year and has representation from all the buildings. Scott's, and one of the administrators, Andrew's, on that committee. Pat sits on that committee. So, those members are kind of... act as liaisons between my office and the teachers in the buildings. They've been helping with identifying some priorities for the curriculum work and also needs. And so, will, moving forward, provide some feedback and input on the work that we do. Primarily, so, for example, one of the first things that came up in that committee was the need for some social studies materials for elementary teachers. And so, it just happened to coincide with a revision of the state standards in science and social studies. And so, we did some work with grade-level groups in the spring. And now, I have over 20 teachers that are doing some summer work for me to overhaul our units in science and social studies. So, that sort of came out of the CIA committee, and we'll go back to them, and they'll get to give some feedback and input. And we're having meetings with the grade-level groups K-5 on Friday morning so that we can share some information. And so, yeah, we're moving forward with that group. They're still kind of trying to figure out exactly what their role is, or we all are, me as well. But they're committed to staying on the committee, so.
Great.
At the elementary level, these are some of the things that we're doing to address some of the areas of need, and also to make sure that our high-achieving students are also excelling. We are going to make sure that we maintain our current interventionists and coaching positions. And we're very fortunate to have title funds to do that with. And this past year, we put in place a homeschool attendance liaison at Sherwood Heights and Walton. And that has gone very well. And again, that's something that we've been able to put in place through the title funds, and we hope to continue that next year.
Could you explain that function, perhaps a little more?
For the homeschool...
What is that person's role? What are their responsibilities?
The role of that person is to work with families of students that are having attendance difficulties.
Attendance difficulties.
So, it may be truancy, it may be chronic absence.
It's not homeschooling.
No, it's not homeschooling. Thank you, Mr. Kendall. No.
No, it's not homeschooling.
Home slash school.
Home slash school, yes.
That's right.
And that's had impact. That's... wouldn't you say, Mike?
Yes.
That's had positive...
And hopefully, you can continue it next year.
Yep, your attendance numbers have looked good.
Yeah, because, you know, we've talked a lot tonight about how do we meet the needs of all of our students. And this is a way that we can meet the needs of some of our students who are struggling in this area. Also, the PBIS support, and we've talked about this tonight, and this is going to be continuing at the elementary level. And this is funded through title funds, as well as the general fund. And as Katie mentioned, when we started the presentation tonight, we have five elementary schools that are Title I schools. And all of those schools have goals and plans that we revise annually. And Fairview also has a school-wide plan and goals that are revised annually. The kindergarten jumpstart programs, we have going this summer at Sherwood, Walton, Washburn, and Park Avenue. So, we're really excited about that. We were able to receive additional funding this year to expand that program, and that has been very successful. The data is showing at the end of the summer, when those students are going into kindergarten, that they've made tremendous amount of growth. So, that's something that we want to look at and continue in the future. We have a math interventionist position that we've added at Walton, and the behavior ed techs at Walton and Washburn. And we are doing ongoing curriculum work and revision with Shelley at the elementary level, and looking at empower for next year in terms of some reporting. And then, we have the Lucy Hawkins Writing Program in place right now. And the Lucy Hawkins Reading and Phonics Programs are being piloted right now at the elementary level. And then, we have a community learning center after-school program going at Sherwood, Washburn, Walton, and Park Avenue. So, again, we talk about how are we going to meet the needs of all students. Our CLC programs provide great opportunities for students after school to continue with their learning and to receive some support. And then, this summer, we're having our summer school learning program again this year for students entering grades one through six. So, these are some of the things that we're doing at the elementary level. And then, at the middle school level, Bob can come up, and he's going to tell you about what next steps are happening at the middle school.
So, just highlights, and these are a few of what will be a very long list of things. But we also are incredibly fortunate to have the Community Learning Center program after school. Their hub is a few feet from my office, so I have a great opportunity to see the incredible work that that team of adults does each and every day. And, you know, academic support, helping with things like snacks and building positive family relationships, and some really cool, fun enrichment activities. Just in the last month, I got to go in and participate as some owls came in, which you imagine middle schoolers love that. And then, one of the last things, I had the privilege of going in and sampling. They had a local business come in that had edible bugs. So, I tried some garlic ants and things like that. And, you know, as you imagine, middle schoolers absolutely loved it. So, just that really powerful thing that is great for our school. Like we've talked about, we will be in a position, and I'm really proud of this, for full PBIS implementation. That has taken a tremendous amount of work. We have a great PBIS team that they began meeting every couple of weeks, and then for the last half of the year, have been meeting every single week. And they're often there two and a half-plus hours after school, weekly, doing this work. So, we have great investment, great buy-in, and I've appreciated the support of this committee and the... and everyone in the district, because that's going to be really game-changing work ahead of us. We will have a new interventionist again to support needed numeracy, literacy, and also the behavioral PBIS interventions that have been discussed earlier. As we begin next year, I'm going to refocus some of the work, and we're going to have a data-driven middle school student services team. So, as we think of things like truancy and struggling families and getting those kids in school, there'll be a team made up of administrators and our guidance counselors and our school nurse and our interventionist, and really folks who can, you know, impact families right away and get the interventions needed for kids. We've talked a little bit about some of the summer work that's going to go on, plans for expanded parental engagement at the middle school. We had some really good success with a monthly breakfast with the principal I did this year, where we had breakfast items donated by local businesses, and parents came in. And, you know, we had... we would have between 10:00 and 25:00. That would come in at 7:00 a.m. once a month to talk about different topics. But I also want to expand that to evening opportunities for parents to come in, because 7:00 a.m. doesn't work for everyone, just like evening does not work for everyone. So, really, a variety of ways to better connect with parents and get more parents involved. And then, something we're working on as a school is providing increased opportunities for student enrichment. If we can have more engaging things for students, more they're going to want to come to school more. They're going to get more enjoyment out of school. You know, such things as intramurals. We have a wide variety of different sports. I want to have more things, you know, that more students can participate in in sort of the form of intramurals, and then just more opportunities for the creative arts and the performing arts, and just more ways that we're planning on engaging students in their learning.
Nice job, Bob.
All right, so, some of the things that we are currently doing on the left, some of the stuff that we've been able to implement in the last couple of years. We've partnered up with JMG Jobs for Main Grads, and we have an at-risk specialist that works with us. And his role is wide-ranging. But one of the advantages is that he has Odysseyware that's available to him, which is their online courses. So, one of the tiers for him out of the gate is identifying at-risk, and that could be that they are credit deficit. So, that provides an opportunity for students to recoup credits, but it also has allowed us some opportunities for some students who, for a variety of reasons, couldn't be in the class at that moment in time or needed to make a schedule switch, and things didn't happen. So, he partners up with our... So he partners up with our teachers to make sure that, because Odysseyware can be this big and in our content it is this big and the way it's delivered at school. And so he works with the teachers to make sure that that's exactly what they're getting so that it's meaningful. So that is an opportunity for us in terms of providing more options for kids. And like I said, sometimes it's for at-risk and sometimes it's because it didn't fit with their student's schedule. We made a change in eligibility for our extracurriculars. And so we moved instead of to passing five, that you have to pass six. And of those six, you need to be passing your four core, your English, your science, your math, and your social studies. And that has been, our eligibility path this year has been met with a much greater level of understanding and a much greater level of success than where we were a year ago. It hit a nice balance of what staff are responding to of saying five classes isn't enough. Our next tier is that we're going to start examining where they are in their path to graduation. Our shift to our tracking, as I spoke earlier, instead of catching them and starting to identify them coming out of their junior year, we're beginning that process early on coming into the high school with some data, but really starting to develop that with their freshman year and start and examine where they are. The result of that leads us into our ninth grade teams. Those cohort of teachers are having those conversations and trying to identify struggling students, whether it be academic, whether it be home, whether it be trauma, whatever that may be. And the outcome of that is that we've seen an increase in our special ed referrals in our 504s because now we have the opportunity for those teachers to meet bi-weekly to really talk about where the struggles are for those students and try to put some interventions. And sometimes that occurs with a 504. Sometimes that's modifying the 504 accommodations. As well as it also has an ongoing conversation rather than waiting for an IEP, if a student already has one in place, that those conversations can be happening. Our next tier is to try to have the special ed case manager more readily available to be able to be participating with those meetings. Another area that we implemented this past year was ICE Week and Mud Week. So during the weeks of February vacation and April vacation, there were opportunities and we targeted, we tried to steal where we could, some good ideas from across the river. And so we tried, we went after, as we were getting our toe in the water, to go after the seniors who were in a place of credit crisis or passing crisis to really try to influence getting them in a best position possible to graduation. So we expanded some opportunities for them during February vacation and April vacation. And we did. It was, you know, how do you define success? Well, if we caught one, then that's success. But we caught more than one, and that was very helpful. And I would say, you know, the credit goes to the teachers who put that, not only were available during that week, but also the teachers that put the work together to make that readily available for them to access during those two weeks. And so those are areas where kids were able to stay on pace or to get back up to pace. And then our summer learning options, we're able to laser focus. We don't typically do summer school the way, the traditional way, where you're going to repeat all of U.S. history over the course of a summer. Because of targets and the way they're sequenced into a curriculum, we laser in onto those specific areas so that kids can get up to passing. So rather than having to repeat a whole year, the teachers determine where that line is of you just need to repair this much versus you actually, there are situations where you actually really do need to redo the entire course. One of our areas that I'm really proud of, the social studies department has developed two tiers, one for ninth, it started ninth grade last year, now it's ninth and 10th this year, where they do actually have two options. And again, it's not an entire summer, but one is to do the repair and the other one is called the crash course, which is much more comprehensive. And so that they, those students that were deemed that you need to actually repeat the whole course, they were able to access that in the summertime. So those are things that we have done and will continue to do and will grow with. And now our upcoming steps is just today, I met with JMG Jobs for Main grads for us to be able to develop a course and put that in. We're going to go partner with them to bring that course here to Edward Little. They have had tremendous success throughout the state. They are very successful across the river in Lewiston, but they are, you know, the list of schools is very in-depth of where they've been. And so I put it in at-risk. They have some at-risk factors that they're looking for, for students, but really it's called a core class where they're really kind of, it's kind of like being involved in LRTC for a full day, but it's just for a course. So what they're looking for is a two, three, they would love a four-year course for students to be able to access, to be able to develop job skills, everything from soft skills to be able to direct them into a pathway that may lead them into the workforce, may lead them to the community college and then out to the workforce. And they really personalize that and it comes back to those relationships. They very much personalize that to the kid and they're trying to identify a kid who hasn't really, as we spoke this morning, they're rudderless and they need some direction and they need some aspiration given to them. And so what we often see are those, we want to catch them before achievement has slipped, before behaviors have slipped, before attendance has slipped. And so this is another opportunity for us to be working with JMG to do that. They have a proven track record, and so that's very positive for us. We started an exploration and we're going to continue that through the year. The department heads are being led by the admin team together. They're partnering of how can we look at our block schedule, maintaining a block schedule but making some variations in there. We've examined data. I, Pat and I have sat on committee after committee after committee saying we need to do something with learning labs. And so I'm tired of pounding our head against the wall, so we said, let's look outside the box. And so there are lots of ramifications when we look at that, but really what we're trying to identify is can we put a universal learning lab within the school day so that instead of, you know, Brian may have first period learning lab, Faith may have second period, that we all would have the exact same learning lab during the day? So that allows for students to move to the places of enrichment and in places of remediation more seamlessly and have it be less disruptive to the schedule. That also allows for us to be able to develop some more course offerings that are more in line with what students are interested in, which would increase their engagement. But also by doing that, also allows us to be able to build in an intervention block for those students who may be behind in their actual achievement scores with reading, with numeracy, with liter, all of those pieces. So we're not there yet, we're exploring it because that's going to require a lot of work and a lot of moving pieces. And it's not just at the building level, but we're going to need to involve the students, we're going to need to involve the families and try to get those stakeholders together so that we're not just diving in, that we have a more thoughtful approach. So this summer, they're doing a book project together to read how some other schools have approached that, to identify some models that work best, and then start having those conversations of what would that look like and what would the ramifications be all the way through our schedule, not just course offerings, not, we want to make sure that those things are in place, not just saying we've now created the place, we want those things to be in place if we create it. And so that's a pretty big endeavor. And so that's something that we're working on to, again, increase achievement and increase the graduation rate. We've increased our summer offerings. So a year ago, it was ninth grade, now we're talking about ninth and 10th. We continue to have our math program that is there for students who need to get up to pace and those students that want to accelerate pace. And that continues to be a very large population of students and it's a very involved math program throughout the summertime. So the math is still happening, but we're continuing to laser in on those student needs. Like I said, a year ago, it was ninth grade, now we're doing ninth and 10th grade, and we'll see where this takes us, do we continue that right up through 11th or where is the nets that catch the other pieces along the way for those students that are in need of it. Student dropout prevention district committee is forming, and so that's going to give us some resources for us when we go back to talking about those students who discontinue that we, when we saw the data on the graduation rate, those students that unenroll. The Student Dropout Prevention District Committee has some, and that's K through 12, has some opportunities about influencing, how do we catch, what does that look like for those students who may be at risk in third grade, eighth grade, and 10th grade in the whole scope? And then we, as a building, have been examining, how is that going to look for us? Are we talking about dropout or are we just talking about kids that are struggling? Because they end up snowballing themselves all into one. And so we're excited to partner up with the district committee, the district program to do that. We've already had teachers who have come forward and say, I want to be part of that. And so just to make sure that the umbrella stays cohesive, that's what we're doing because that's been, I guess I have about eight teachers who are heavily involved in wanting to pursue that and be available to do that. So that's why we talk about where we can get those resources together. And then our culture club, that's been another really positive growth. We've had some teachers step forward to say, we want to enhance the culture. And culture is all-encompassing. It's everything from in the classroom to in the hallway to out on, in the performances, whether we're talking about the soccer field or we're talking a theater performance. Like, culture is all-encompassing through our building. And so they are utilizing, they've already started, we did another presentation this morning in a staff meeting of what their steps are, what it looks like for the building, what it looks like for staff, and what it looks like for students. And that really helps build the relationships with kids, kid to kid and kid to teacher. And we know, to come back to how important those relationships are, for them to be able to strengthen and support our mentor program so that they would have a hand in trying to develop what that looks like because we have a long existing one. We've gone through many renditions and this is an opportunity for us to really strengthen it and have a rudder in the ground of saying this is the purpose of it, this is how it's going to get delivered. And there's a lot of student involvement in that. Like, there's a true model of the teachers, that I would say the staff being the facilitators and the students really driving that. And one, as I was sitting here, that I completely forgot in this past year, that we implemented homeroom this past year as a grounding and starting point every single day for each student. It was a constant for them. And that was a 10-minute giveaway that paid off for us, the number of times that we were able to intervene because the mentor teacher, who is the homeroom teacher, was able to identify that Scott was having a problem that day, Bob was in conflict, like, those are very powerful things and that the kid always had a constant starting point. And that was a positive for us.
Wow. I love this innovation and thinking outside the box. Thank you very much. This is, you're going to see some great results. This is wonderful. Thank you very much. And the end of the year report is outstanding. This is unbelievable.
We do a lot all year.
Yes, yes. But, you know, I just love that, you know, pushing the plate and thinking of alternatives and, you know, not going just down one row, you know, just, this is outstanding. It's going to reap a lot of benefits. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for all the work that you all have done over the year and putting everything together and making our kids successful. You've done all a great job.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Good job. Thank you, Sue. Good job.
Excellent. Excellent.
Ready?
I think we're ready for a finance report.
All right. It's almost nine o'clock. We met Monday, the finance committee, met for about an hour and three-quarters, almost two hours. We went over the finances and you all have received the finances in your packet. So if you have any questions, please ask them. Otherwise, I'm moving right along and I'm moving into the May financials of what you have. We took a look at the year-end, what we think is going to happen come June 30th, and you'll be updated on that. I'm trying to conserve time. I just wanted you guys to know that when you see some cranes at the middle school going up on the roof, we have two compressors that need to be replaced. They are fairly new. They've been there for about three years and we should have more life than we do in them. However, the manufacturer has agreed to replace two of these compressors for free for us. So you will see Cody Crane, I believe, delivering the compressors to the roof this summer. Siemens will install them for us, and this should all happen in early July. We're also looking at construction to begin in the month of July, probably, if we keep our fingers crossed on Park Avenue. On it, Monday? It's going to begin on Monday.
They'll be there Monday.
Start setting up on Monday.
Okay. So the goal, remember, is to get the construction done that would affect the kids on the first floor before school starts. So we're working on that. And the good news is that it came in under budget, so we're very pleased with that. We are working on our CIP projects. We have gone, we have been out to bid. I think I saw seven projects that will start on it. So we're very pleased that we've got CIP moving right along for us. And the last item that I have is, and I could go into more detail, but I'm not going to because of the time factor. The last item I have is the balances that we have on our hot lunch program. Fairview and East Auburn are atrocious on it, atrocious on it. We don't know what to do. We've tried sending notes home, principals have called, assistant principals, Roz has called, business office has called. I don't know if you've called, Katie, that was an option, we push it to you. But actually, what we've decided to do is probably go to a collection service at this point. So we will lose 30% about to the collection service, but we'll gain 70% back out of nothing. So we need to do something. We need to send a message that if you qualify for free and reduced lunch, please fill out the application. If you leave the system, that's really not nice to the other people, that you leave with a big balance. And I'm talking balances of $500 in some cases, and more than that, your right. So that is, that was very important to us, that we recoup some of this money, also thinking that we never leave a child hungry. We always give a child something to eat, whether it's at the middle school or at the elementary schools. Kids do get something to eat. So I don't know what you do, Scott, but the others.
We let them starve.
We let them starve. But, right. So, but it's very important to note that we do, we're concerned about this at this point. And we're not the only system. There's systems all around the country that have problems with this. Let's see what else I've got here. Some of the things we're doing in Walton, bathrooms, cafeteria, and lockers and a field fence will be replaced, starting right off. And the roof at Walton, there's parts of the roof that will be done. Fairview, they're going to get a carpet, and the new carpet in the library. Washburn's getting new doors. Park Avenue is getting the big expansion. We also have a homeland security grant that will pay $30,000 towards the Park Avenue generator that's coming, which is important because that building is a.
Shelter.
A shelter, thank you. Is a shelter for the community. So if you have any questions about the system, we will have further details also about where we need to be sure that we balance the budget come the next meeting.
As the auditors.
I guess the one big question is, it appears that we're going to have a balanced budget.
We will. Trying to look at some projections over the last couple of weeks as we come into the end of the year and keeping in mind that we'll have bills coming in for another month and a half. So it's not as though we shut things down on June 30th. But if I had to project right now, I'd project between $500,000 and $1 million, to $1 million under budget, which is where we came in last year, which is about 1% to 2% under budget, which is in general a good place to be. But it's possible we may again have to do a transfer with special education going over due to, mostly to tuition. But as the June bills come in for that, we'll know if that's gone over. And then probably for September, we'll prepare those transfers, if any, and bring those to you for approval. But that's the outlook right now, and obviously we'll know more next month of how things ended up.
Any questions on the finance report?
No. Is there any plan for when school begins in the fall with these same individuals as they come in and we don't want to not feed them? But is there something in place to just jump right on top of it? At the beginning of the year for.
Well, they're going to a collection agency.
Right.
And then, you know, we carry the balance, right?
We'll discuss what we're going to do from there. We do. So when they begin school.
Have another discussion.
Have, yeah, what I'm getting at is.
We'll be discussing this probably all through.
We'll be discussing this probably all through the summer when we meet, so.
The key point to make is that we want to work with these families.
Exactly.
If you have, if the balances are growing, we'll work with them. If they don't qualify for the free and reduced, we want to work out a payment plan. We want to work with them. Just contact us. So, I just wanted to make that point, that we're willing to work with people, to work this down over time. We understand it's not necessarily going to be paid off in one immediate payment.
Exactly.
But we'll work with people. We just have a responsibility to the taxpayers to try to collect this money. And so, we're going to do everything we can to do that.
And we've made some small baby steps in getting some money.
Yeah, we have. And thank you to Roz for her help with that.
Yes. Very big thank you. Thank you to all. Okay.
All right. I'd entertain a motion to approve the finance report as presented.
I move we accept the finance report.
All those in favor? Thank you very much. Committee reports. Which committees have met?
Audit.
Audit has.
Audit has met.
Well, let's hear from the audit first then.
Audit has met. It's an exploratory first meeting. It was a good meeting. We, of course, have two school boards and two...
Letting them go. They don't need to...
And these two could go too.
Right. Yes. I mean...
So, we...
Hasta la vista.
We, we met with the auditors, and we have two school committees and two city council people. And it was very interesting. We all have some concerns that we've expressed, and the auditors are, I'm sure Adam and Jill have heard what our concerns are, and they're looking into it, and we'll come back to that. The next meeting will probably be August, I would say.
Very good. Alfredo, anything?
No, we have a meeting next Monday, so we'll put up that.
Pat?
The Community Learning Center, CLC, wound up the year last week. I went to a short meeting. They did get their grant, which I had announced last month. They have to work on the numbers of kids who are referred. It's kind of, it's tricky. They have to qualify in certain areas, and then you can have other kids that can participate, but only a certain percentage. And as Bob Griffin referred to the owls and the bugs, I mean, they do some really incredible things with kids, and the high school does also. So, it's K through 12. And it's a really good thing for kids, and I would like to see more kids involved, you know, if we could get it. And the Share Center, they were, participated in the clean sweep at Bates, and I don't have any figures on that, but that was a tremendous, tremendous effort on Lisa Rodriguez and her cohorts, and they do an awful lot of work for that. So, that's that.
Dan? Nope. All right. Bonnie, you can bring us up to date on the new EL Building Committee?
Well, as we all know, we have a new high school that's going to be built. 2023 is the move-in date. So, we're excited about that. We did meet last night as a building committee. The next phase that we're dealing with is fundraising. We were presented a very good, thoughtful way to fundraise by the superintendent. And all I have to say is that we're on the move fundraising, and you're going to hear more from us later.
Yeah, July 10th. We're doing a workshop on July 10th to just talk about ELHS.
So, the deal is that if you have a very big donor, very big donor, please give that name to the superintendent. We have, we're going to have one person, and that's the superintendent, go to large donors. So, the message is the same. The middle section, and we're going to try to raise $2 million at the top. And then, the middle section, we're going to raise about $900,000, and that's going to be anybody that wants to donate, naming rights, anything in that, in that, that section. And then, the bottom section, I'm looking at a pyramid, that's why I'm saying, in the, and then, in the bottom section, we are having about a $100,000 plan to raise. And that could be anything from participating in the Alumni Weekend for the 150th. So, that...
Fake sales.
I beg your pardon?
Fake sales.
Geez, spaghetti did us. Right, we could do all of that, but we are, we're looking to do something bigger for the Alumni Weekend. So, stay tuned. I saw an old friend from many years ago, and I asked him this morning, do we still have an alumni, ELHS Alumni Association? He kind of scratched his head and said, yeah. Where did it go if we don't? So, Scott's going to help me to try to find out where it is, who it is, because I knew that Bev Willett used to be the secretary, and I'm sure that she's changed, turned that over to somebody. So, the ELHS new building, we're going to get it all, and as long as the construction goods come in at a good, at a good price on it. So, if you have anybody that has naming rights, wants to name anything, talk to Katie and let her pursue it. Katie is the deal.
All right. Good.
And the funding committee.
We will get an update, an executive session on negotiations. Upcoming meetings this summer, we're doing, is the second one in July pending new appointments, your second one in July, the 24th. We have one on the 10th.
Yep. The 10th is a definite.
It's a definite, with a workshop at 6:00 and a regular meeting at 7:00. And on the 24th, I assume that is pending appointments.
Yeah.
And we'll need that. August 7th is a regular meeting at 7:00. At 6:00, regular meeting for hiring purposes, again, doing that at 6:00.
Yes. He's going to get to me.
Summer meetings. Okay, then the regular meetings are on August 21st and then September 4th, both at 7:00.
If anyone's looking for a job, Tim ran in an offer in the paper starting at 42 grand.
Wow, nice. That's good.
Good. We do have a need for executive session, so I'd entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of property acquisition, pursue it to MRSA 4056C and also 4056D, which is teacher contract negotiations. Motion, please?
So, moved?
Oh, second.
Second. All those in favor? Very good. Declare us an executive session.